This meeting is being held in accordance with the Sunshine Law Notice having been published according to law with a copy on file in the City Clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in City Hall. Councilman Vitaglia.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Here.
Councilman Sims.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Here.
Mayor LaBrass.
Here. Okay, would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey. Mr. Loyakino was not here this evening, he's on vacation. Mr. Costas filling in for him tonight as our city manager. It's time for the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I have the Super Bowl Committee will be meeting on September 25th in the council chambers as formed by the Upper Main Street Alliance and the Chamber of Commerce. It will be at 9:00 a.m. and it is open to the public. Second, the surveillance cameras, we discussed for Hudson Street and Main Streets.
Or check your mic just to make sure. Can you folks hear him? Sorry. You're all right? Sorry. Thanks.
Surveillance cameras for Hudson Street and Main Street that will continue to seek grant funding for that project to see if we can get better pricing for that. Regarding videotaping of the council meetings, we agreed that we would go out to bid for continued videotaping, see what kind of prices we would get. And happy to see Anderson Street, the Anderson Street Initiative, if you drive through, I think the mayor has gotten some good comments already that Anderson Street has done quite a turnaround. The appearance looks very nice. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Heck.
Hi. Are we going to move to approve the minutes or we're not?
The minutes on here?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped the approval of minutes. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes for August 19th and August 20th?
I'll motion.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilman Vitaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye. Okay, now we can move on to Resolution 387-13. Thank you.
Resolution number 387-13, introduction of ordinance number 20-2013, and ordinance amending chapter 146 entitled Soil Removal of Part II entitled General Legislation of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code. Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 20-2013 as introduced, does now pass on first reading and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on October 8th, 2013, at 8:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council and at such time and place all persons interested given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law but they notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
You have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Vitaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
Resolution number 388-13, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack that the bills in the following accounts be and are hereby ordered paid. Current funds $709,985.29, grants $9,684.48, payroll $1,469,354.54, public parking system[290.56][290.56]$6,797.79, capital $18,813.50, trust account $48,118.35, total expenditures $2,262,699.95, and inter-funds/transfers $208,714.52.
Could I have a motion to approve the bills, please?
I'll offer.
Offered.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vitaglia.
Councilman Vitaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
Resolution number 389-13, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack that the proper officers be and are hereby authorized to make the following refunds for the reasons stated. Mayor, this evening's tax refund resolution consists of, I believe, three pages, begins with the amount of $8,023.77 payable to Schneck Law Group LLC, and ends with the amount of $34.24 payable to Butler, Kizria, and Alexandra.
I have a motion, please.
Offered.
Offered by Ms. Greenman.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sims.
Councilman Vitaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
Resolution number 390-13, where a state statute provides that the director of the Division of Local Government Services may approve the insertion of any special item of revenue in the budget of any county or municipality when such items shall have been made available by law and the amount was not determined at the time of the adoption of the budget. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen State of New Jersey hereby request the director of the Division of Local Government Services to approve the insertion of an amount of revenue in the budget of the calendar year 2013 in the sum of $60,000.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Offered by Ms. Greenman, seconded by Ms. Canastrino.
Councilman Vitaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
Resolution number 391-13, where a state statute provides that the director of the Division of Local Government Services may approve the insertion of any special item of revenue in the budget of any county or municipality when such items shall have been made available by law and the amount was not determined at the time of the adoption of the budget. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen State of New Jersey hereby request the director of the Division of Local Government Services to approve the insertion of an item of revenue in the budget of the calendar year 2013 in the sum of $5,000.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Offered by Mrs. Canastrino.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sims.
Councilman Vitaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
Resolution number 392-13, whereas it has become necessary for the city of Hackensack to engage various professional service providers, whereas qualification statements by professionals were submitted to the city by July 18th, 2013, at 10:00 a.m., whereas the city found it in its best interest to qualify certain professional service providers on August 20th, 2013, whereas the city finds it in its best interest to now assign certain professional service providers to various positions, matters, and assignments. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Hackensack that the city finds it in its best interest to assign the following professional service providers to the following positions, matters, and assignments. City Attorney McElroy, Dutch, Melvany, and Carpenter, compensation will not exceed $200,000 without the express written authorization of the city. Labor Attorney Juan C. Fernandez, compensation not to exceed $100,000. Tax Appeal Attorney Mark A. Reso Esquire, compensation will not exceed $100,000. Affordable Housing Counsel Jeffrey R. Serenian and Associates, compensation will not exceed $100,000. Special Litigation Counsel, compensation will not exceed $4,000 for the following professional service providers. For labor unemployment investigations, Car Magnola and Retarde LLC. Before the Michael J. Monahan versus City of Hackensack case, Thomas B. Hanrahan and Associates LLC for the representation of Charles Ziza, Joseph Ziza, and John Ziza. Dictus Gillan, PC, representation of Karen Sasso, Jorge Manessas, Marlin Towns, Michael Nelphy, and Charles McAuliffe. Charles Ziza versus City of Hackensack at Al litigation, Dario Yacker Suarez and Albert LLC, representation of the city. Dictus Gillan, PC, representation of Anthony Ferrioli. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute contracts with the above professional service providers.
Okay, Ms. Heck, for the special litigation counsel, the compensation, that's supposed to be $40,000, not $4,000.
Okay. Will not exceed $40,000, okay.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
I'll offer.
Offered by Ms. Canastrino, seconded by Mr. Vitaglia.
Councilman Vitaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
Resolution number 393-13, whereas it is mandatory for the Hackensack Health Department to have a licensed health officer as per the New Jersey practice standards for public health, whereas a health officer should be available at all times of operation to address any questions or concerns that may arise relating to public health, whereas there is only one health officer employed by the city of Hackensack, and whereas there will be times when the health officer is unavailable due to occasions of illness or use of vacation time, and whereas the Paramus Health Department has a full-time health officer. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Hackensack that the Hackensack Health Department is authorized to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Paramus Health Department.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Offered by Mr. Sims, seconded by Mr. Vitaglia.
Councilman Vitaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
Resolution number 394-13, whereas the governing body of the city of Hackensack has been advised that an emergency affecting the safety and welfare of the general public of the city of Hackensack existed when various motor vehicle accidents occurred and repairs were needed when the controllers became inoperable on Passaic at Summit Avenue, whereas the cost of all the repairs is $6,394.29, which is fair and reasonable, and Allen Brightway Electric has supplied all materials and overhead for such. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack that pursuant to state statute with which authorizes the governing body to pay Allen Brightway Electric Contractors Incorporated 130 Algonquin Parkway, Whippany, New Jersey for this emergency be paid therefore.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Offered by Ms. Greenman, seconded by Mr. Vitaglia.
Councilman Vitaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye. On this particular resolution, this was an accident involving a New Jersey transit bus. I believe we are looking for to be reimbursed for the repairs to the light and the electronics, so hopefully we'll be recouping these funds here. Thank you.
Resolution number 395-13, whereas the governing body of the city of Hackensack has been advised that an emergency affecting the safety and welfare of the general public of the city of Hackensack existed when various motor vehicle accidents occurred and repairs were needed when the controllers became inoperable on Passaic and State Street, whereas the cost of all the repairs is $7,822.73, which is fair and reasonable, and Allen Brightway Electric has supplied all materials and overhead for such. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack that pursuant to state statute which authorizes the governing body to pay Allen Brightway Electric Contractors 130 Algonquin Parkway, Whippany, New Jersey for this emergency therefore be paid.
A motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Offered by Mr. Vitaglia, seconded by Ms. Canastrino.
Councilman Vitaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
Resolution number 396-13, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack that the proper officers be and are hereby authorized to make the following refund for the reasons stated. $19 is a refund for an alcoholic beverage license issued by the Hackensack Police Department, and the refund goes to Ms. Karen V. Quashay.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Offered by Mr. Sims.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Canastrino.
Councilman Vitaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
Resolution number 397-13, whereas Joel Orlando Melo, sanitation worker, has requested an extension of his leave of absence without pay for one month for personal reasons, and whereas city manager Steven Loyakino has determined that this employee be granted an extension of his leave of absence for one month commencing Monday, September 23rd, 2013, and ending on Sunday, October 20th, 2013. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack that Joel Orlando Melo, sanitation worker, be granted an extension of his leave of absence for one month without pay as requested.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Offered by Mr. Vitaglia, seconded by Mr. Sims.
Councilman Vitaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
Resolution number 398-13, whereas the city of Hackensack received proposals for recycling for the city of Hackensack and Maywood for recyclable paper and co-mingle materials on September 10th, 2013, and whereas four proposals were received from Atlantic Coast Fibers, Green Sky Industries, Galaxy Recycling, and Waste Management, and whereas it is the recommendation of the recycling coordinator to award the contract for recycling for the city of Hackensack and Maywood to Atlantic Coast Fibers LLC. Now therefore be it resolved that the contract for recycling for the city of Hackensack and Maywood be awarded to Atlantic Coast Fibers, Passaic, New Jersey.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Mr. Sims and Ms. Greenman.
Councilman Vitaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
Resolution number 399-13, whereas the governing body desires to resolve the litigation captioned Grace Aquave v. City of Hackensack. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Hackensack that the city attorney is authorized to settle said claim and execute the requisite settlement documents.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Offered by Ms. Greenman.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Canastrino.
Councilman Vitaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
Resolution number 400-13, whereas the governing body desires to resolve the litigation captioned Nina Galbo v. City of Hackensack. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Hackensack that the city attorney is authorized to settle said claim and execute the requisite settlement documents.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Offered by Mr. Sims.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Canastrino.
Councilman Vitaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
Resolution number 401-13, whereas the governing body desires to resolve the litigation captioned Demary Fernandez v. City of Hackensack. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Hackensack that the city attorney is authorized to settle said claim and execute the requisite settlement documents.
May I please have a motion?
Offered.
Offered by Mrs. Greenman.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sims.
Councilman Vitaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
Resolution number 402-13, whereas an emergency has arisen with respect to tax appeals and no adequate provision was made in the calendar year 2013 budget for the aforesaid purpose and state statute provides for the creation of an emergency appropriation for the purpose mentioned above, whereas the total amount of the emergency appropriations created, including the appropriation to be created by this resolution, is $5,500,000, and 3% of the total operating appropriations in the budget for calendar year 2012 is $2,428,897. Whereas the foregoing appropriation together with prior appropriations exceeds 3% of the total operating appropriations in the budget for calendar year 2012. Now therefore be it resolved that in accordance with state statute, petition be made to the director of the Division of Local Government Services for permission to exceed the statutory limitation of 3% for the creation of an appropriation for the purpose set forth in the preamble in accordance with the following. Number one, an emergency appropriation is hereby made for tax appeals in the amount of $5,500,000. Number two, that said emergency appropriation shall be provided from a refunding bond ordinance to be adopted prior to December 31st, 2013, or will be funded in full in the calendar year 2014 budget. $2,428,897 is requested to be excluded from caps, and $3,71,103 within caps pursuant to state statute. Number three, that an emergency note not in excess of the amount be authorized pursuant to state statute. Number four, that such note shall be executed by Tammy Zucka, chief financial officer. I don't think you want me to read all of this.
No.
Five, six, seven, and eight.
Not necessary.
Okay.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll offer.
Offered by Ms. Canastrino.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sims.
Councilman Vitaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
Resolution number 403-13, there is an error on here. The resolution reads be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack that Regina De Pasqua is hereby appointed to the planning board, but for a term of four years is not correct. It is actually to fill the unexpired term of Joanne Cologne, which expires December 31st, 2015.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Offered by Mr. Sims, seconded by Mrs. Canastrino.
Councilman Vitaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. It's time I'd like to open the meeting to the public. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll offer.
Tackled. Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sims. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, if you'd like to say something, please step up to the podium, give your name to the clerk, your name and address, please. Thank you.
Victor Sasson, 261 Euclid Avenue. Good evening.
How are you, Mr. Sasson?
How are you? One of the resolutions is about the traffic light repair at Passaic and Summit.
Yes.
Passaic has no turn lanes. That's a real choke point. I tried to reach the county, the bureaucracy there is unbelievably dense. I haven't been able to speak to anybody.
I know, they only have it on Summit. Actually, last meeting, a woman came up and addressed the exact same situation.
Yeah, is there some reason, you know, that, I mean, there are turn lanes almost all along Passaic.
I think it might have something to do with the width of the street because it's not really, Summit's two lanes.
Right.
Across, whereas Passaic, if somebody's making a left, yeah, but they make the left, they're backing up traffic anyway.
They're not, the intersection's not actually a right angle. I saw a tractor trailer trying to make a turn.
Yeah, it's kind of offset. I agree. I live right, I'm in that neighborhood. I wish it had turn lanes. It's a, it's a problem.
Is it a county, Passaic is a county street?
It's a county that automatically makes both ways county, so.
It'd be nice if the city could call up the county, you know, and ask them.
Mr. Costas, I don't know, make a note, when Ms. Loyakino gets back, we can address it again. I know it's been addressed, though, already. Thanks.
I've seen talk about the lot, the parking lot near Foschini Park being developed.
Yes, there has been talk about that.
And as you know, during the election campaign, there was a lot of people expressing an interest in having a municipal pool.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be a perfect location for a municipal pool. This, you know, we have, it's just a thought, I mean.
Well, one of the, well, it might not be a bad location for the pool, but I think there's some better ones. But I think we'd be better suited developing that property, taking the money, getting the ratables, and hopefully taking some of that money to pay for the pool. That's the biggest problem.
Now, there's been a lot of, there's a lot of apartment development in Hackensack, and there's more apartment development in the future, including on the record property.
Right.
Which is a huge flood, flood zone, so I don't quite understand how they're going to be able to develop luxury apartments unless they have gondolas and canals, you know, like in Italy. Maybe it's going to be called Little Venice, the Little Venice section of Hackensack. That would be nice.
That's possible.
But as you also know from the campaign, the apartment tenants are the most apathetic of all residents. They're not invested in the city, they don't vote, and I don't know how you can, you know, shape development and the city residential development, but it'd be more preferable to have condominiums and other apartments that are owned by people rather than rental apartments, so.
I'm not against condominiums or townhouses, but right now, what, the market is what really is driving this. The market's more driven for apartments right now. People can't really have the amounts to put down and purchase right now. So right now, it's a renters' market. That's, I think that's what's driving all these apartments.
One thing I'd like to see is the city council pass a resolution concerning the growing amount of tax-exempt property in the city. The county now is building a justice center, as you know, and a few blocks south from there, they're building a maintenance facility and fuel storage facility.
Correct.
Is the council concerned about the growing amount of tax-exempt property and the burden that it's putting on homeowners? Is it interested in having someone such as the city attorney or the city assessors sit down with the hospital, Bergen County, and Fairleigh Dickinson, and talk about perhaps some in-kind contributions that they can return to the city and move paying the taxes?
That's a possibility. As far as the county, the new county building they're putting up goes, it's already on tax-exempt property. putting up goes, it's already on tax-exempt property, it's in the parking lot, which was taken.
I understand, right.
They are, for instance, taking the county DPW and county police station, putting that back on the tax rolls, so we are getting that back, this is Briskish Street property. So it, there is a little give and take there, but, you know, they are a substantial property owner in City Hackensack, and it's tax exempt.
The hospital.
I don't know what the feasibility is, and I, you know, we could talk to council about that.
You know, the city, the hospital itself owns $130 million in tax-exempt property, it's such a substantial amount of property, we'd like to see something.
Yeah.
Come out of that. Finally, has the council, or is the council intent to revise, to review the use of city cars that are driven home by employees?
Yes, we do, we're actually looking into several different options there, all right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sasson. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Attorney. My name is Jamal Rahman, I live on Prospect Avenue.
Can you spell your last name, sir?
I'm sorry, oh, R.A.H.M.A.N., first name Jamal, J.H.A.
M.A.L.
M.A.L.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, the main reason I'm here, I'm a school crossing guard, and I happen to like the job very much, and one of the problems that I've found, I've been doing it for approximately, well, it'd be two years in February, I don't see any union representatives or anybody here, that may be one or two people, one or two crossing guards here, but the main problem seems to be in disarray as far as prescription cards, raises, we get $10 an hour, other counties get a lot more money than that, so I'm kind of speaking for some of my fellow crossing guards who are not here and they should be here, and I just wanted to know whether we stand, I didn't, like I said, I don't see the union rep here, and we had a meeting last week, I think it was last Friday, and I asked her, in reference to not just a raise, I was asking her about what's going on with meetings, I mean, what's happened with prescription cards?
Right.
And I'm just not getting any answers whatsoever, so I figured, well, let me come down here and see what's going on, let me come down and speak to the people here, you know, and so that's the main reason I'm here, I'd like to say, one other thing is, on the corner where I'm at, there should be a sign that says, "No parking within 50 feet," because it's an accident waiting to happen.
What intersection is that, Mr.?
It's right on First and Berry Street, if you're going down First Street towards Passaic, right there on the corner, that's where I'm at, and I really think there should be a sign there.
No parking within 50 feet.
That should, yeah, because I've seen it happen about three times, where people are coming up Berry Street to make a right on First, to go towards Central, and they can't see, and the other car that's coming down has been real close, I mean, by inches, and the first thing people say, "I didn't see him."
Hey, Mr. Costa, could you contact Traffic tomorrow, see, have them check that out?
Yes, Mayor, I will.
Find what's appropriate there.
And also, along the lines with the union, we will be starting negotiations with the crossing guards very shortly.
Okay.
As we just have new council appointed.
Okay, so one of the things, the council does, actually doesn't handle any labor negotiations.
Okay.
It's done by the city manager and/or personnel.
Okay.
So we're.
We're in the process, sir.
All right, good enough, I just thought I'd come down and express that anyway.
That's one of the things we're hands-off on.
All right.
Mr. Costa and Mr. Loiakno.
All right, I appreciate it.
Holding union contracts.
Okay, all right, guys, thanks a million, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
How are you?
Hi, Mayor, how's everyone?
Good, could you please state your name and address to the clerk?
My name is Marina Ariza.
I just spelled the last name A.R.
A.R.I.Z.A. Marina.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the reason I'm here is because back in April, they started up, I'm going to explain myself as best I can, a sign on 131 by Hudson Street and between Liquor Store and Kansas, there is a one-hour parking over there between 7:00 and 7:00 P.M. That day, the second day, I got a ticket, I paid for, the fine, okay, so I've been parking in an M&amp;M building in the back, and then, because I had two cars, so I've been parking one car behind my house, because I'm allowed to park only one car, okay? Last week, we got, I got a sign where they said that I cannot park there between 8:00 to 11:00 P.M., and then, I don't have nowhere to park my other car, so yesterday, I left my car in front of my house, which I've been living there for almost 18 years, and then I got a ticket, that's not a problem, I would pay for, okay? So my question here is now, where am I supposed to park my other car at night? Like now, when I go home, I don't have no space in the back, I cannot park in the M&amp;M building, okay? I came here, I wrote a letter to the city of Hackensack, I got an answer, they cannot give me a parking law sticker, I mean, parking permit residence stickers, and then I came here and I spoke with Frank Aquila, and they said they cannot do anything, so now, is my question, is the city of Hackensack can help me to find out where I'm going to park my other car? And then I asked Aquila, Miss, yeah, I think it's.
Lieutenant.
Yeah, the Traffic Department Division.
Yes.
Where am I supposed to park in the wintertime? And then he said, when I come sample from, with my shopping food, and then he said, no, I have to drop out my bag, go upstairs, and get them parked in the back, now I cannot park in the back either.
Now, recently, they changed the sign, you said they changed the signs recently?
Well, this is a sign forever, since I've been living there, the sweeping day, which is Tuesdays, 9:00 to 12:00, okay, one day I left my car, I forgot, I got a ticket, that's not a problem, that was my fault, but now, there is a ticket, one-hour parking, right?
That one-hour parking is.
To what time?
7:00 A.M. to 7:00 P.M.
Right, so at night, you can park there, no?
Yeah, no, I cannot park between those hours.
If it's 7:00 A.M. to 7:00 P.M., you can park from 7:00 P.M.
Yeah, but do I have to get up in the morning to park in the back in the M&amp;M building, which is, my car is going to be tow away from there, I got the copy on here, I got this, I cannot park in the M&amp;M building.
You probably shouldn't be parking on the M&amp;M property.
So, well, okay, I know that, because this is cool there, something, I don't know, I'm not sure, but my question is, where I'm going to park my other car during the day?
I'd have to look, I mean, I don't know what the other street are.
I have copy of everything, you can keep this.
All right, if we can get copies of that, please.
I'll investigate, Mayor.
Yeah, if we can get copies, you investigating, maybe just.
Okay.
I'll take care of it.
Look into it and inform us of what's going on, and we'll see what's going on.
Okay, I hope you will help me, appreciate whatever you're going to do for me.
If we can, if we can help you, we will.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do they have, do they have a contact information?
I believe I do here, ma'am. I have your, maybe your phone number, ma'am?
Yeah, 201-878-6837, that's my cell phone, and during the day, I'm working 201-336-6101. Thank you very much.
Hi, everybody, hi, Mayor, I'm Councilman.
Could you give your name and address to the.
Ah, yes, my name's Jorge Santa Maria, that's J.O.R.G.E.S.A.N.T.A.M.A.R.I.A.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, I'm the owner of the, I'm here, you know, basically to support her, I'm the owner of the house on 129, she lives on 131, I had a ticket too with my car, it was my mistake, because, you know, we had a sign, I lived on the, I buy the house 11 years ago, maybe 12 years ago, and we had a sign on the front, across the street, the same sign that gave one hour, or for two hours, was, you know, 7:00 to 7:00, we never realized, you know, we had the sign on this, on the other side of the block, which is my house located, and suddenly, there was a sign on one corner by Kansas, with the, it's a senior, a senior center over there, and one more sign by the Liquor Store, but nobody announced that, not even, you know, we never received from the city, like a communication before, you know, a head of time or something, giving us the advice, you know, the street and regulation going to change or something, so I leave my car over there, it was maybe a little bit too lazy, you know, to park the car on the back, because I had two cars, and I had parking for two cars on the back of the house, but I say, well, I'm going to leave the car over there, because, you know, suddenly, maybe I went to shop or something, when I come back, the ticket was there. I paid the ticket, because I say, well, the signs are there, nobody going to believe me, you know, I didn't know what the sign is, so basically, I'm here, you know, to support her, and my tenants too, because I had a three-family house, and I had a not parking, you know, for my two cars on the back, but later on, you know, my niece, my daughter, one of my tenants, you know, maybe they're going to buy a car, and we are still having the same problem, where they want to park the car, you know, when the N and M building parking, say, right now, they cannot park in between 8:00 o'clock until 11:00 o'clock at 9:00. You know, my question is, when the chores used to own the school, why never happened that? I mean, the school was there forever, I don't know for how long, but I know the school is there and the chores is there for 11 years, and I live in the same area, and we never had that problem with the public parking, you know, the municipal parking, everybody was able, you know, to park over there, and going to the chores, going to the school, I don't see, maybe the city going to increase the teachers or the, or the crew on the school right now, because I believe the city owned the school right now, for some reason.
The city's not, the city doesn't own the school, you're talking about Padre Pio?
Ah, I'm not sure, I mean, I, that's the rumor I heard, you know, the school going to be on the city management now.
It's going to be rented by the Board of Education, not even by the City of Hackensack.
Okay, by the Board of Education, so I don't see why, you know, the regulation can't so strong right now, you know, like, when on the pass, never happens, I mean, never had a problem, you know, with people parking over there, let's say, when my relatives going to come, you know, to visit me too, we're going to have problem, let's say, one given day, you know, and we're still having the regulation, you know, for one hour only, we're going to be like crazy, you know, like, go back and forth, moving cars, you know, not to put it well.
Right.
You know what I mean, that's, that's basically, you know, why I'm here, I'm fine, but, because I'm fine, I don't feel, you know, I don't feel all right, you know, when the people is not fine, I, yeah, I'm fine, I'd like everybody to be fine too, so, thank you very much.
We're going to look into it, I know there's, one of the issues is, it's a mixed-use area, there's a lot of apartments, and there's a lot of small retail businesses in the area, and if they don't have parking, that's why sometimes the parking is made for shorter periods of time, because if they don't have parking, they can't exist, and they go out of business, so they have to have parking for, at least so somebody can run in, shop.
Okay.
In 20 minutes, but, I mean, they have to have some availability, if somebody could park on the street all day, the street would be packed with the same cars all the time, so that's probably one of the issues, but.
I will.
Chas is going to investigate it.
Exactly, because I see in another cities, you know, another towns in Jersey, especially more busy than us, you know, because that's closest to New York, like Union City or West New York, the residents got permits, you know, to park, I don't know how that works, I don't know, maybe, maybe we've got to think of something.
It depends on the zone, because yours isn't strictly a residential zone, it's, Matthew, what zone is that? It's in the business, and that's probably why. It's based on the zoning laws and how they apply, and that's really what dictates some of the parking in the area, but we're going to look into it and see what.
It's a piece of residential area.
It makes.
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you for your time, okay?
Thank you.
You have his contact information?
I have his address.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, I'm here on behalf of my neighbors, I live at 125 Hudson Street.
Could you please give your name to the clerk and your address?
Harry Draper, 125 Hudson Street.
Thank you, Mr. Draper.
I'm here on behalf of my neighbors also, I live at 125, unfortunately, I have a place to park in the back, but the signs like, she's, there's one sign down by Hudson Street, the other sign is down by the Liquor Store, now, if you pass the light at Kansas Street and you're coming down the park, you don't see no more signs there, and there are two more poles with street sweeping signs on it, which you also can add, put those signs there, so people will be aware of it, and they just popped up overnight, what our concern is, just give us the residential sticker, so, or if not, when the police come through, let them run their plates and find out that we are residents that live there. Summit Avenue, Prospect Avenue, Maple Hill, Roland Avenue, they all have those stickers, so that's, that's all we want, you know, and by it being a place where you go eat, some people might take more than an hour to eat, there are restaurants there, you know, places you go in to pay your bills and stuff, it might takes more than an hour, so that's, that's what we're asking for.
We're going to, we're going to assess the situation.
And I talked to Chief Madaght, he said for us to get together and come and talk to him, and he will work on it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Draper. Mr. Incautara, how are you?
Incautara, I'm Mr. Incautara, how are you, everybody?
Very good, how are you?
I'm at 43 Broadway in Hackensack, and I would just like to add to this gentleman's request, I have, I go to get my haircut on Hudson Street, and I noticed the sign was "One hour," and I said, gee, one hours, that's, that's not enough, you know, and I, one of the merchants said to me, gee, you know, my customers, they got to run in, they run out, and so, I said, maybe they can extend it to two hours, you know, I understand the situation, you know, we want to keep the places open, so I think another hour, probably two hours is maybe a good suggestion, I know that, you know, change is on the horizon, and I see in Broadway now that we have the school, the preschool, kindergarten, that things are different now, there's a lot of teachers now who need to use a parking facility, and they're using the M&amp;M building and, or M&amp;M parking lot, and, you know, I'm concerned that, you know, we all get enough parking, but I'm also concerned, more so than the parking, is to put up a sign that says we get 25 miles per hour speed. Now, last week, there was a guy on a motorcycle, Mike Mordega has made a big improvement in our neighborhood, and we see changes, however, we are still getting speeders.
Okay.
And there is no sign that says 25 miles per hour, that's now, that's kids, you know, and so, I'm going to request that, you know, you look into putting a sign, but I'm also going to request that maybe Mr. Scrivo, that look into the legality of speed bumps. Last week, I spoke to several of my neighbors, and I said, you know, maybe we can get speed bumps here, you know, the kind that are taken away in the wintertime, some say it's not legal, why is it the Teaneck and Anglewood and other places have speed bumps? Now, to see people go speeding, you know, especially with a motorcycle, this guy, like I said, last week, a guy maybe doing 80 miles an hour, you know, what do you want, what do you want to do that for? You know, so I know with my block watch that we are getting some things changed in terms of maybe painted on the pavement, school zone, 25 miles per hour.
Okay.
Which I think is a positive thing, but I would also like to see a sign be put up, because there is no sign, and I would also like to find out, you know, if we could get speed bumps there.
On which street?
On Broadway, on Broadway, maybe two speed bumps, it's a problem, it's a problem. I know maybe a year or two ago, somebody was hit, I don't know what they, how fast they were going, but the kid wasn't hurt badly, but it's, it's something that I'd like the mayor and council to maybe think about, you know?
Okay, Mr. Costa, could you, again, contact.
Yes, sir, will, Mayor.
And definitely see about the signage, because there should be a school zone sign.
I'll check with Lieutenant, I'll be right away, sure.
And the feasibility of speed bumps, I know they're, they have mixed reviews on this.
Mixed reviews is something, but again, the 25 mile per hour sign that says, you know.
Oh, I agree, it should be.
I'm only looking out for not only the residents, but the school itself.
Mm-hmm.
I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Next, please. Please state your name to the clerk and your address.
Good evening, my name is Louise Scott, S.C.O.T.T.
How are you?
I live on Stanley Place in Hackensack, I'm backing up Jamal's request for a raise for the crossing guard, because I've been there four years, and I haven't gotten a raise yet, and where I stand on the corner of Rarole Avenue and Berry Street, you get a lot of traffic, there's a lot of kids, and the cars do not stop at the corner when it says "stop," and some of the kids, they just try to ride their bicycles across, and it's very dangerous, and I think our job is just important, as the cops are, because we're in danger, just like they are, so if you can just look at that, okay?
I definitely will, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, how are you?
My name is Imani Mohammed, and I'm a 10th grader at Hackensack High School, and I know you guys aren't the Board of Ed, but I just have a few complaints about, like, it's really hot in that school, and like, when it's summertime, I don't want to be in class sweating half to death, and it's burning up in that school, and then, like, they'll tell us we can't drink water, but the teachers are drinking water, and I don't see it to be fair, and they tell us that we can't open a window because someone snuck inside the high school once, and they got in trouble for it, but I still don't see that to be fair to not open the window when it's burning up in that school, like, it's not fair, and I just want to say thank you for considering the recreation center on behalf of me and my family.
You're welcome, thank you. Hey, anybody else? At this time, I'd like a motion to. Oh, sorry.
You, you twist long, John.
It's last night, I got here too late, good evening, Kathleen Salvo, 184, we have a big problem in the Broadway Hudson Street area, and the problem being is that things have changed, since the Board of Ed is leasing the Padre Pio that was Catholic school, the teachers have tripled, they used to have about 10 teachers, now they have 32, we've been working with Frank Aquila on this, we're trying to get one row for the residents, we're trying to get, just accommodate everybody, and we think we have work, we think we're going to get one row just for the residents, but then Greg Leosie says that he also needs that for the A area RP meetings, he needs it for a lot, I thought it was a bit much when he put the signs on for 7:00 in the morning to 11:00 at night, but he wants to incorporate, like, if anything goes on at the cultural center, because we do use that for, you know, that facility for M&amp;M, the cultural center and the school, but the reason why the things have changed is because the, there are more teachers, Paul didn't know about it, and Paul's been very good, we've been evaluating this, the whole area, because he just started last week, and we're trying to see no parking here at a corner, he gave me a couple of suggestions, a couple of people are complaining that they're blocking their driveways, which they shouldn't, we're trying to get a good flow and make it safe for everybody before these parents get in bad habits, and we're going to be going through this all year, so we're trying to be proactive on it, the other suggestion was that Frank Aquila will be putting signs up that say "school zone," we will be painting the streets that say "slow 25 miles an hour," we would like to look into the speed bumps, and they do speed, and I'm trying to get that one side to put parking on, we're trying, we're going to evaluate that, so we can get like 12 more parking spaces on the one side that was where the Broadway frontage was, so we are working on it, and hopefully, we'll try to make everybody happy, because it's a whole different situation, as far as Hudson Street goes, it is a mixed-use, it's residential, but it's also a business district, I agree, I think the two hours is better than the one hour, but people who do live there have to realize that it is primary business in this zone, and the people need to patronize these stores, and if you have a resident that, like John said, that's there all day, where are they going to do? Are they going to double park, or how are they going to go into these, you know, these business facilities? And Harry was right, there is a void where there is no sign, so if you do approach that one area, and you don't, you can't see that one sign that's way behind you, and that other one that's way ahead, there should be one in the middle, maybe they could rescind their ticket price, because that was very unfair for those people, the second thing is, is that Summit Avenue is a county road, why do we get stuck paying that bill for that traffic light?
Well, we're not, I don't think we are getting stuck, we're going through New Jersey Transit, their bus lost control and took it out.
Okay.
The control. The control themselves, I believe, are, were ours. Um, and if it was the counties, would, would they?
No, because the only, Summit Avenue is county all the way up to, um, what do you call, Spring Valley. And then, past Spring Valley, it becomes Hackensack's responsibility. So, I don't know how this, this, I don't know. Sometimes David does do some of the, some of the ones that are, but...
And we maintain that light.
We do, 'cause we, I know there are some that are county roads, but we still, we still, we still service.
It's our box, I think they got hit in out of county box.
Okay.
And, uh, I believe from past conversations with Mr. Loi Akino that we are pursuing reimbursement from New Jersey.
Okay, that would be great. Um, the other thing is Anderson Street looks, looks really nice. It's a shame that somebody had to bring it to our attention that it was so, it was so bad, as are a lot of areas, and it's, it's property maintenance, that's, that's the problem in the city. Um, also, I think Regina pulled this up for me, 'cause I asked for it, and she found it. Um, it's chap, and I read it to Albarelli, and he's going to deliver it to everybody on that block. The property owner is responsible for the front of their property. Uh, "All exterior property and premises shall be maintained in a clean, safe, and sanitary condition. The occupants shall keep that part of the exterior property which such occupant occupies or controls in a clean and sanitary condition." So, now that we spend all this time and money on, on doing this, 'cause we did it twenty years ago, um, and, and cleaning it up, it's up to the individual property owner to be responsible for the front of their property, so that we can, we can keep it this way. And hopefully, we'll get new garbage cans, because those garbage cans are twenty years old, most of them, they're, they're more hit than miss, they's all, they're all battered. And painting is, it's like putting perfume on a pig. I mean, I wouldn't even, even attempt to do that. And there are nicer, there are nicer garbage cans that, that can be placed in there. And it's the one that, look, if you guys are familiar with Sesame Street, it's the same garbage, I think, uh, I think Duffy picked them out twenty years ago, and I'm not making any comment about that, you, we know what happened with him. Anyway, um, it looks like the ones from The Grinch, what's, what's, what's the, the character? Oscar, I'm sorry. It looks like the one that Oscar comes out. They're, they're, they're really ugly. So, now we got, I think we're on, we're on board, we got all the property owners to keep, to maintain the front of their property, and we should be good. Um, okay, I think I'm, I'm done, 'cause I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am. How are you?
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Uh, I'm not very, like, good talking, like, in public, but I wanna try to do my best.
Just give your name and address.
My name is Amelie Santa Maria, one of the owners too, uh, one of the houses on Hudson Street.
Mm-hmm.
I know it's a commercial area, but between these three, there is not many, like, private houses. Like, there have, there is a lot of business, but they do have a lot of parking space on the back, and I don't think it's, like, gonna be affected if we can't get a parking permit. I don't know, maybe you can help us to get a parking permit, like, I, I agree with the two hours. But at least for the people, the owners, us that we pay taxes, and it's a lot of taxes that we paying, that we can get this little help. I don't know if you can at least help us with it.
Parking passes are feasible in that area with that zone? Um, and we're also gonna talk with Lieutenant Akeela about...
'Cause there is not a lot of, like, houses over there, like, they have, like, the, the tenants and the other buildings, they do have a lot of space on the back. It's only few houses, like, few houses that need, that is their parking on the street.
All right. No, we're, we're gonna do our best, we're gonna look into it and see, see what's available.
Okay, thank you.
We wanna help you, but we have to stay within, you know, it's a, it's a balancing act there.
Okay, thank you.
Right? Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Sir, how are you?
Ma'am, ma'am's Peter Marcus, Hanny, sixty-five Davis Avenue, Hackensack. I, I just wanna start off by saying, I, I'm really impressed with, with the people who are here. Usually, we have a lot of negative complaints, people complain about this, people complain about that. The continuity of some of the communication, the fact that there are two or three people talking about the same thing, who have already spoken amongst themselves, I think says an awful lot about some of the hopes and aspirations that these people have with this new, with this new council. The fact that they can work on, uh, uh, community development, they can work on common cause, they can work on street issues. Um, we could've seen it coming, uh, the whole Padre Pio conversion, obviously, more students, smaller students, tiny students, disabled students, uh, special needs students, more cars, more parents trying to drop kids off. All of this stuff requires, obviously, a response on our part, and I'm sure we'll get it, you know, appropriately with...
Mm-hmm.
I had a cop say to me today, you know, when he was putting a sign, twenty-five miles an hour, the old radar sign back on Davis Avenue again, which comes and goes, maybe it should be moved down to Broadway. Uh, why don't we put speed bumps in on Davis Avenue? I said, yeah, it's not a bad idea. The portable ones, of course, 'cause I guess that's easier probably to do, whatever the legal ramifications may be, but all of these things, I think, uh, are, are good suggestions from these people, who, if they get together and they know each other, can probably put together a written plan, or some, you know, instead of saying, I think there's a sign here and a sign there, tell us where the signs are and where you think they should be.
Right.
Tell us, you know, there's a street cleaning sign that doesn't have, could easily have added to it, you know, no parking here to corner, because it's within fifty feet of the intersection, that kinda stuff. So, it all goes well, I think, you know, in that regard. I just had a few, uh, questions myself. As long as somebody brought up the, the old Summit and Passaic traffic signal, I had mentioned that years ago, and, and Steve had said, you know, we're gonna put a turning arrow there. The problem at the time was, there was only a thirty-second green light on Summit Avenue, and the traffic used to back up all the way to the hospital during rush hour. And they put the turning arrows in. We have another issue with that, I don't know who can address it. What they did is they put two green arrows, uh, even though there's only one turning lane. And I've seen a couple of times, even with a police officer nearby, and he didn't even notice it, uh, that when that light turns green, people step on the gas in both lanes, because it's a very, very big green arrow, and it almost looks like, you don't even see it's an arrow. And I think if they just dismantled and removed the one arrow, and just left it over to left turning lane, it would probably be a much, a, a bigger safety enhancement. And that's a disabling thing, rather than something that's gonna cost money. So, if they're taking a look at that intersection, or, or what they can do, that, that might be, that might be helpful. Uh, on the issue of, uh, the recycling, I'm glad Mr. Costa's here. We do garbage for Maywood, uh, and we do, we did do recycling for Bogota, do we still do that?
No, we don't, sir.
We don't, okay. We do recycling for Maywood, though? I didn't know that.
Yes, we do.
Oh, okay, so that's a new addition, or at least it hasn't...
No, we have been doing that, yes.
'Cause I see the Maywood trucks doing recycling, but I see the Hackensack trucks doing, doing garbage. Now, when we contract for the recycling, is that money paid us? Is that what the contract is?
That's correct.
For taking our recycling, as opposed to us paying them to handle it, or?
No, what we're doing is, we're getting paid for the service, and they're getting credit for their, their recycling.
So, we get paid by the municipality, by Maywood?
Exactly, yes, it's by contract.
And then, they take it from us, and, and the interlocal with, not an interlocal, but the contract with the recycling organization is for them to profit from the recycles, they don't give us any of that back?
We get paid from the recycling markets.
Oh, we do?
But we, not...
A share.
Well, we get, uh, we get our, whatever we turn in, and Maywood gets theirs, because it affects their grants.
Okay.
Uh, but we get paid for the service, for the collection service, same with garbage.
Right, correct.
Exactly.
But for the company that we give it to, that takes the recycles, we in turn pay them? That's a one-way payment?
No, actually, we, we get, uh, money from them.
Okay, and then they profit from however they can dispose it?
Exactly.
Gotcha. The, uh, one thing I, I, I mentioned, I, I wrote you an email last night about the old sidewalk tree heaving situation, uh, and I looked up, I have to confess, I know Steve's not here, but this search engine on, on the city ordinance, the city codes is outstanding, by the way. You know, you can really grab things in a hurry. I found out, I don't wanna belabor the point, but I found out, I'm looking at the trees and sidewalks, that you're not, I live in Davis Avenue, right next to Maple, not Maple, but Willow and Poplar, and you can't plant Poplar, Willow, or Maple trees in Hackensack, those are, those are banned species, you know? So, maybe we should change the street signs on all the different streets. But, uh, I did have a neighbor, uh, call me and said, what, what can I do, who can I talk to about, uh, the fact that a, a tree stump, a tree root is heaving up the sidewalk, and her insurance company has told her, you know, fix it in thirty days, or we're gonna cancel your policy, 'cause it's gotten to that point. And, uh, I know there's a lot of confusion over it, and there is a lot of confusion even in the way the, the code is written, but, uh, Steve had said at one time that they would examine, the city would examine the tree roots to see if they could shave them, and then the property owner could then replace the slab. I don't know whether that's accurate or not, and, and a tree, the city would then determine if the tree really needed removal?
I think, I think that's the key, is whether the tree needs removal.
Ma'am, if I may?
Go ahead.
Uh, we will, uh, if the homeowner will pay to have the slab lifted, we can, if possible, trim it away, as long as it wouldn't cause, uh, too much damage to the tree, and maybe affect, uh, in a storm that it would, it would fall.
Exactly.
But, uh, we would, we would help by cutting the roots.
And, and you would do that, you would assess the situation and make that determination?
Yes, they always do, is have to call a DPW.
I've also seen some other situations, I don't know how it ties in with the building permits, but I guess you would get a building permit for a sidewalk, to loop around on your property, uh, the sidewalk around the tree stump, you know? It doesn't have to be a straight line. And the other thing I wanted to ask, just for curiosity's sake, 'cause I'm over my time, is do you need a sidewalk, or can you simply just remove it? Interesting.
I'd have to look into that.
This particular property, this particular property has a sidewalk, property next door doesn't have one.
If it's pre-existing, you'd probably have to replace it.
Nothing in, nothing I can find in the, in the code that says that has to be maintained. Good point. Get on it, Rose. Love you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Art.
Regina, DePasqua, Parker Avenue. First, um, I wanna say thank you, thank you, and, um, I look forward to working with you guys. Um, I also wanna say thank you for, uh, the clarification on professional services, that, that's helpful, makes sense. Um, I'm very happy to see settlements actually put on, put out there, that some things were settled, that people know this. I don't think I've ever seen that done before. I'm very unhappy about the problem that has been inherited with the, um, tax appeals, five million dollars. I know it's an inherited problem. Um, I want, Mr. Mordaga was here, but he, he's not here now. I wanna commend him for putting a light on another problem we inherited, the million dollars that the Board of Ed just kept. Um, I, I feel, I feel the taxpayers have paid twice for the resource officer. The Board of Ed put it in their budget, and that's how our taxes were set. They, it wasn't billed by whomever for the last eight years, and I know this is being worked on, but, um, then, we had, the taxpayers had to pay for the police officer, his salary, but we already paid the Board of Ed. So, we, we paid twice for this, this officer. And the Board of Ed does not feel they need to be accountable to the taxpayers for what they did with that money, because they were not billed for it. It, it just, I, I'm floored by, you snooze, you lose, is, is basically what we taxpayers. And I don't know if they, if they realize there's, they're saying the city, as in the government, no, we taxpayers are, are getting kicked in the butt by this. A million dollars here, five million dollars there, uh, uh, we can't afford it, we can't afford it. And, um, and then to say that, um, we would have to sue them, um, well, then we taxpayers would have to pay for the city attorney and for the Board of Ed attorney. So, we lose again. I, I, I am flab, I will be going to a Board of Ed meeting, I believe, on that, just to...
Thank you.
Um, just to say my piece on that one. Um, also, today I had reason to come down Bergen Street to state, and those barriers, I mean, I drive a van, but the way the light was and whatever, I couldn't see to, I know, I guess I'm supposed to stay in the left lane, but I wanted to get over to the right to make the right turn on Essex Street, but the light was red, and it just...
That's from the construction from the...
Yeah, it's just very difficult. I mean, I don't usually come down Bergen Street, I just ended up coming that way. And I'm like, how do people do this? That if you, you're making that left, and the, the, the barriers come all the way out, make a whole lane, but I couldn't see, even though I'm in a van, I drive it, so I can see, but I'm not that tall that I could see. And it was just confusing and distracting to me at that point. Uh, I, I don't know that anybody else has had an issue with it, but it just happened to me today. Um, one other thing, uh, last night you mentioned about the BCUA meeting, um, I, I looked it up. It's October second at ten AM, which is not really convenient for most people to go to. Is the city considering sending a representative to that meeting?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
There will be probably more than one.
Okay, because there, there are issues, definite issues on that, and, uh...
We will see to it that somebody from this, at least one, if not two, people are there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Seeing no others, I'd like to get a motion to close the meeting in the public.
I'll offer.
Offered.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, uh, it's time for council comments. We'll start with Mr. Bataglia.
Hello, everybody, you know? We're gonna go like, uh, Paul was saying, people speeding in the city. I've been, like, working with Mike Mordaga for the last few days about people speeding in different sections of the city, especially now in Fairmont Avenue. I don't know if Peter noticed it, but, uh, we got a police officer for forty-five minutes. In forty-five minutes, he catch twelve people speeding close to forty-five miles an hour in a twenty-five mile sun. So, he shot twelve tickets. The following day, he got eleven, okay? So, we are working in that. And Mr. Mordaga is gonna get more police cars. We are looking into the possibility to put the speed bumps, right, in different sections of the city. I already got speed bump in Johnson Park, because even, believe it or not, in Johnson Park, the people are speeding, and we got kids crossing from one part to another one. So, we are looking into that. I told him that we should be get a reputation, yeah, like in Tene, Bergenfield and Bogota, you don't run in these particular towns. I got a ticket, seventy-two miles an hour, many years ago. So, we should be get the same reputation that nobody gonna speed in the city. So, Mordaga is working in that. Related to the person that said that the problem with the air conditioning and this and that, she should be go and complain to the Board of Education. You should be go to the meeting and express yourself about how it is. Okay? Whatever we got, the parking, we're gonna try to work on it. Okay? So, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Bataglia. Mrs. Canestrino?
Good evening. Again, I'd like to thank you all for coming. It's nice to see a lot of new faces here tonight, and although I'm sure it's discouraging to have troubles parking and situations in your streets, I'm glad that you came to us with those problems, because I think working together, that's how we can come up with a good solution for those issues. a good solution for those issues. I'm happy to hear people come tonight, not only talk about a problem, but suggest some solutions, because that's what it's all about. You gave us some wonderful ideas, you know your neighborhoods, and you're coming and you're telling us, these are the kinds of things that maybe would work out for us. And I promise you that we have the right people in place, and we'll be looking to come up with a good, a workable solution wherever we can, to help that problem. Again, there was a lot of change down in the neighborhood with bringing a whole new set of schoolchildren, new set of parents, new set of teachers, and, you know, sometimes when there's changes, a little bump in the road, so to speak, and until we get our feet wet and we get acclimated. So, you know, we will make progress, and we're glad you're here to voice your concerns. Question about the tax appeals. Everyone that knows me knows that I'm the money girl, and, you know, very upsetting to me also to have to look at paying out $5 million in tax appeals. But I promise you, we have good people that are researching these things, and we are going to do what's right for the city. Many of these tax appeals go back to 2006, if you can believe it, that they've remained unpaid. It's unfathomable to me that these things can go back and predate that long. We've inherited these things, we're going to work through them together. All of this, everything has a solution, everything is solvable. If we put our heads together, and we do the right thing for the city. As far as with the Board of Education issue that was brought up, again, it's another monetary issue, a lot of confusion, a lot of misinformation out there floating around. We need to get to the bottom of it. Before we make official statements, we need to have all the facts. We need to understand what happened, and how do we proceed from there? And again, we will look at the most cost-effective way for the city to ensure that everyone is secure, our residents, our teachers, our children. That is our primary concern, and doing it in a way that's cost-effective to our residents is of secondary importance, but it's very important as well. And lastly, I want to congratulate Regina on joining us on our planning board. I think it's wonderful to have people step forward and volunteer their services to the city. We had a number of qualified applicants, which we were very excited to see and interview, and we look forward to a great year on the planning board. Welcome, Regina.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sin?
Good evening. The crossing guards, hopefully we can get a contract resolved for them, and they can get a raise. And also Hudson Street, we want to look into maybe changing from one hour to two hours. On a good note, on Sunday, I attended an event at the Fiesta, where we honored three African-American principals for our services for the past 15 years, Lilian Whitaker, Andrea Parshman, and Joy Whitey Dorsey. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Graiman.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming. Appreciate everyone coming. I'm going to make an appeal first, like, United Jewish Appeal. We have a library, a wonderful library in town, they're having a book sale. I would appreciate people donating books, as well as coming and buying books. They need the money. They're doing a wonderful job, anything at all, classics, humor, children's book, cooking, whatever you have. If you in doubt what to bring, which books to donate, make a phone call. Donate your time to the library, they have wonderful programs. If you have any particular knowledge in the area, you know, offer, speak to the librarians, offer your services. It's a wonderful place to be. If you have any computers, any technical knowledge, again, ask them if they need anything, they can use just about everything. I'm a library trustee, so I'm pushing that cause. Congratulations to Regina, welcome aboard. I know you're going to make a wonderful contribution to us. As far as the Board of Education, very upset about the situation. Should not be such adversarial situation. We're not talking about North Korea, South Korea. We're one Korea, one Hackensack. We have the same concerns, this money is coming from the same people. We should work together on it. We should not be put in a situation of spending money for North. This was overlooked. We're looking into it to see exactly how it could have occurred, but it did, and now we have to resolve it, and we will work very diligently to find an appropriate solution to this problem. Make, rest assured that we will. As far as the tax appeals, again, we inherited the problem. It's not a pleasant situation to be hit with all of this. We're looking into it. We're going to find the guilty parties, and we're going to investigate and make sure that people who did not do what they were supposed to do would be shown for what they had done. We're going to work very hard to reconcile all of this, and to remain in your good graces. And we appreciate all the good things, and not such good things that you bring to our attention, because it makes us better for knowing if there is a problem, that we should, you know, be aware of it and find a solution to it. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. This Friday's homecoming. Friday night at 7 o'clock, home game, homecoming for the Comets. They're 2-0, off to a great start, so come out and support your local high school football team. Game's always a lot of fun, a lot of excitement. Tonight, we passed the first part of a soil removal and soil movement ordinance. To me, this is very important. You would say, what's so important about moving soil? But many communities in the past have been plagued with, when they do developments, or pretty large developments, where soil comes into your city, and you don't know where it comes from. And many times, Edgewater is an example, you end up with soil that's tainted or contaminated, and it ends up being a disaster for your city. So this ordinance is being put in place to protect the citizens of Hackensack. Any large movement of soil coming into the city has to be inspected, and we have to know where it's coming from, and it has to be clean soil. So I thought, it's only dirt, but it's important. The tax appeals, you know, it's never, it's never fun inhering a $5.5 million gorilla like this, but we'll get through it. It's, you know, it's not going to be easy, but we'll do what's right. We have some great people working behind us, as Mrs. Canestrino said, professionals, and they have some great ideas, so we'll be working on that. Glad to get these RFQs on board. All these professionals that we put in are here to help us go through, just like we said with the tax appeals, some of the things that have happened in the past, to get to the bottom of some stuff that we know has happened, and looking forward to working with them. I was glad to see the health officer situation. That's an interlocal agreement between Paramus and us, which works out well. You know, if you only have one health officer, and he needs to be away, it works out great when another municipality can chip in, and vice versa. So that's a shared service-type issue, an interlocal agreement, that's good. The M&amp;M Building, we're going to look into, I know we're going to be watching closely about the signage down there, that is an active school, it has been an active school, I'm surprised there wasn't more signage down there. The Board of Ed situation, really taken back by this one, and at this time, for the record, I want it on the record, I'm asking our council to start an investigation and a negotiation process, digging into how this happened, why this happened. We need to get to the bottom of this, and I have a very strong opinion on this. My opinion is, the resource officer should be paid for by the Board of Education. Reason for that is, I can't look a Hackensack taxpayer in the face and say, guess what, you're paying for Maywood, Rochelle Park, and South Hackensack resource officer, all right? It's a community, it's a high school, it's like original high school, it has four send, or three send districts besides our own, and it would be hard to charge them separately through the city and bill them, when it should be built right into their school taxes. So that's my take on that. But at this time, Mr. Morris, I would like for you to look into, start investigations, see what, digging up what happened here, see what we can find, what happened in negotiations with the Board of Ed, and working with them to see if we can rectify this.
We'll commence that immediately.
Thank you. In the meanwhile, Mr. Mordaga has been keeping in touch with us. There's been a police officer outside that school every day since school opened, okay? Hasn't been a resource officer, but there has been police presence at the school. So, and there's been activity at the school. If you read the paper today, I'm not going to dwell, dwell or delve into that, but as far as resource officer, that's really to us, the Board of Ed. When the Board of Ed wants a resource officer, they need to approach us with it, and they need to pay us for it. That's my opinion, all right? And I want to congratulate Mrs. De Pasco for being on the planning board, all right? And at this time, that's it. Thank you very much. Meeting is closed.